Good evening councillors, good evening members of the public. Before we commence this meeting I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me. No practices are planned tonight so if the warning goes it's for real. Can you also please ensure that your mobiles are switched either to off or to silent? Most grateful. This is a public speaking meeting. Members of the public I'd like to say that as a committee we understand that matters under consideration tonight can be emotive. This is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting therefore please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee and refrain from any booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. Can we move on to the business? Item number one, minutes of the meeting which took place on 6th of January 2016 have been on the table for the last 30 minutes. Are you content I sign them as a true record? Item two, apologies for absence. Emma, any apologies?
We have apologies from councillor Jed Hall, thank you.
Thank you very much. And item three, declarations of interest. Any members before the meeting?
None before the meeting but I believe Hazemere Town councillors would like to declare a non-percussory interest.
Thank you all very much for that. Questions from members of the public, have there been any, Emma?
None, thank you chairman.
Thank you. Any relevant updates, government guidance? Elizabeth?
Not tonight, thank you chairman.
Thank you very much. Quarterly appeals report. Louise?
Thank you chairman. Members will note that there are four decision, appeal decisions on the agenda report. Can members note that the second item which is in regard to Baker Oaks on Gardners Hill Road is a western item and so should not have been included in the report? Please accept my apologies for this. So the first southern appeal was at Woodhill on Tilford Street, this was for a fence above the existing wall. This was a delegated refusal and was dismissed at appeal. The inspector agreed with the council that the fence was inappropriate green belt development and would fail to preserve the character of the conservation area. He concluded that the proposal would only have a limited impact on the open character of the green belt and the AGLB. The second appeal decision was at 21 Bridge Road and this was for a residential extension and a covered walkway. This was a delegated refusal and again was dismissed at appeal. The inspector agreed with the council that the proposal would result in overshadowing and would appear overbearing to the adjoining occupier. The final appeal decision was in relation to Montana on Chert Road and this was for the demolition of the existing building and the erection of five detached dwellings. This was a delegated refusal and was dismissed at appeal. The inspector agreed with the council that the proposal would be dominated by hard surfacing and that the number of dwellings proposed would be out of character with the surrounding area. He also agreed with that the mix of housing would not meet the needs of the borough. The inspector also agreed there would be a loss of privacy to the occupants of the adjoining property at 24 Hilgar and that the relationships between the proposed dwellings would also be poor. The inspector disagreed with us on, with regard to the fact that the terraces would result in noise and disturbance to the adjoining occupiers and he did not think that affordable housing would be required. Thank you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much Louise. Members, any questions or are you content to note the report? Thank you very much indeed. Moving on to item seven, quarterly enforcement report. Victoria, it's all yours to report.
Thank you chairman. I have, councillors I have some verbal updates with regard to the southern site specific report. On land at Winton Arms, officers have now visited and we have evidence to be submitted to legal services. With regard to Prestwick Cottage, officers have visited and we have now referred the additional evidence to legal services. And with regards to Seven Lion Close in Hazelmeir, the building officers have visited and the building is still occupied and that is being referred to legal service for with regards to prosecution proceedings. If I could just draw your attention to the summary of caseload statistic. Currently in the October to December quarter, there is a report of 184 cases on hand which is a further reduction. And page 12, if I could just draw your attention to the local performance indicator, we have, which we have a 70% of cases action within 12 weeks. We report in the October to December, we achieved 85%. Thank you very much and I'm pleased to answer any questions, thank you.
Members, any questions at all? Councillor Edwards?
Thank you chairman, just going back to page 11 and Seven Lion Close. It says that the sale is due to complete for the building shortly. What does shortly mean because I understand that there's a problem with that. So, you know, do we give them time or do we just hang on there until they sell it?
Thank you chairman. This, we don't hang on basically, but this is why we're referring it to prosecution, absolutely. We've, you know, we've been told it's going to be, that the sale is going through, nothing has materialised, so therefore we just press ahead for prosecution. Thank you chairman.
Thank you, thank you very much indeed and well done on the 85% mark, excellent. Members, are you content to note that report? Thank you very much. Application for planning permission on agenda item eight. Site visits in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the application at this meeting. They'll be held on Tuesday the 1st of March 2016 at time to be agreed. Moving on to the planning applications which is for public speaking. Item A1, WA 2015 1918, the cooperative supermarket Lion Green Hazelmeir, on pages 1538. Application under section 73a to vary conditions five, retention of existing trees and nine restricting service vehicle movements of WA 1976 1672 to allow five, the felling of a number of trees and nine extended vehicle movement hours. Louise, we'd like to introduce this application.
Thank you chairman. Section 73 applications are applications to vary conditions attached to an approved planning permission. Outline planning permission was granted in 1977 followed by the reserve matters in 1979 for a supermarket with ancillary storage, staff facilities and car parking. A section 73 application in effect grants a fresh consent, however, this development has been implemented and is well established. As such, it would be not, it would not be reasonable to revisit the principle of retail use on the site. The application that members will be considering this evening is to vary two conditions attached to that original consent. Condition five requires that the existing trees around the perimeter of the site shall not be felled without the prior agreement of the local planning authority. And condition nine stated that there should be no service vehicles delivering at the site on Sundays or later than 5:30pm on any other day. This application proposes to vary condition five to allow the felling of 30 trees and the coppicing of nine others and to vary condition nine to allow extended delivery hours from 6:30am to 8pm on Monday to Saturdays and between 8:30 and 6pm on Sundays. The site is located on the eastern side of Lion Lane and is occupied by a single storey retail unit and associated car parking to the front of the building and servicing space in the eastern corner of the site. Lion Green Open Space is located to the north and west of the site and areas to the south and east of the site are predominantly residential in character. This first photo shows the front elevation of the site. The trees in the foreground are part of the Lion Green Open Space and the second photograph shows the front elevation of the site. These trees on the right hand side of the entrance here are within the boundary of the site and are the subject of this application. This photograph shows the north-west elevation of the site. Again, the trees that you can see in the foreground of the photo are on Lion Green. These photos show the entrance to the loading bay and the loading bay as existing on the site. And these final photos show the rear of the site looking towards the properties at the rear of Waste Springs. Councillors should note that the fence does not denote the boundary of the site which lies beyond the boundary, the landscape buffer which I'll show you later on the plan. The proposal proposes the removal of 30 trees and to coppice nine others. The trees in green are proposed to be retained and those surrounded by a hatched line, if you can see on the plan, are proposed to be removed. On the north-western boundary, 10 trees are proposed to be removed and nine others coppiced. The trees which are proposed to be removed do not offer a higher degree of visual amenity and are likely to be self-seeded saplings. Members should note that the removal of eight of these trees and the coppicing of six others have already been permitted under a previous application on the site. On the north-eastern boundary of the site, it is proposed to remove four trees. Again, these are not considered to offer a high degree of visual amenity and are of poor form. Furthermore, some of them are actually touching the building. Members should note that the removal of three of these trees have previously been permitted under the previous application. One tree is proposed to be removed on the south-eastern boundary of the site. Again, this tree has previously been permitted to be removed under a previous application. And on the south-western elevation, it is proposed to remove 15 trees. Again, these are likely to be self-seeded and have grown up through neglect and again do not offer a high degree of visual amenity. The removal of 11 of these have been permitted under the previous application. This plan is the tree replacement plan. Two replacement trees are proposed on the north-western boundary, one on the north-eastern and one on the south-western. Hedging is also proposed on the south-western boundary of the site. Members will note that the quantity of replacement trees are less than those proposed to be removed. However, the finning of the existing trees are caused with best practice and will help enable the higher quality trees that are proposed to be retained and the replacement planting to remain healthy and in turn offer a higher degree of visual amenity. The current site is subject to a condition which restricts the delivery hours from one minute past midnight until 5:30pm and so they cannot deliver after 5:30pm and midnight and it does not allow deliveries at all on Sundays. This application proposes to allow deliveries between 6:30am and 8:30pm on Mondays and Saturdays, Mondays to Saturdays, sorry, and 8:30am till 6pm on Sundays. The environmental health team is satisfied that the extended delivery hours in the evenings and on Sundays would not result in an unacceptable level of noise and disturbance to adjoining occupiers. They have however requested that the existing fence is maintained in its current position and this can be seen on the plan on the screen now. It's just here and here, or on the zoomed out plan here and here. The existing landscape buffer which is situated here between the site and these properties here would be maintained subject to the loss of trees which I've already discussed. The delivery hours in the morning would be a reduction on the existing arrangement and as such no objection is raised to these hours. It would be an improvement on the current arrangement whereby deliveries can take place at any time after one minute past midnight whereas this scheme will attach a condition preventing them from delivering before 6:30am. In conclusion, it is the officers' opinion that the removal and replacement of trees will have an acceptable impact on the visual amenity of the site and that the hours of delivery will have an acceptable impact on adjoining occupiers. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, the effect upon the SPAs, flood risk and biodiversity. The matters for members' judgment this evening are the impact of the loss of trees on visual amenity and the impact on residential amenity. Can I draw members' attention to the update sheet that outlines that amended plans have been received securing additional planting and details of the fencing to the rear as I've previously shown you in the presentation? And also that a quiet delivery protocol has been received which relates to deliveries after 5:30 and before 7am. Two additional applications on the site have been received for signs and external lighting and a car parking barrier. These are currently under consideration and will be considered on their own merits. Conditions two, six and seven have been amended to take into consideration the amended plans that have been submitted. Furthermore, since the publication of the update sheet, two additional representations have been received stating that deliveries must not start before 9am and after 5:30pm and not at all on Sundays. These issues are addressed in the officers' report. Thank you chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much Louise. This item is for public speaking, I understand the procedure has been explained to you, so can I call on the objector, Monica Cotwood, speak?
Could you just pull please out the first slide up, the one that you had on...
Good evening, you have four minutes, thank you.
We live in Waste Springs which is a quiet residential cul-de-sac. Many houses are in close proximity to M&amp;S and the loading bay. Our house backs directly onto the loading bay, we're at number 27 and I'd like to point out the curve of Waste Springs and the incline that actually gives these houses a direct line of sight to the loading bay and increases the number of houses that are affected by it. The proposed morning deliveries at 6:30 and 8:30 on a Sunday will be in nuisance. Most people are sleeping at this time and deliveries at this time will shatter the peace of the neighbourhood. We will hear reversing alarms, engine noises, refrigerator units, trolleys clattering, staff talking over this racket and these noises will be heard in our homes and both ways up and down the street. I can't imagine anyone here would like to be woken up that each morning. And it will be every morning because we understand that M&amp;S are intending to deliver at the earliest possible opportunity. There seems to be some issue about turning and this will cause a severe disruption to our lives if we're disturbed by this every single morning. The co-op who previously occupied this site since the 70s managed to deliver during reasonable hours. They had early deliveries at the front door and only used the loading bay about three times a week in the mid-afternoon, so this is a big difference from what M&amp;S are proposing. There's been an acoustic report written by consultants working for M&amp;S. This report came to the conclusion there will be little or no impact on residents. Well, there are quite a few questionable pieces of data in that report but we can say for certain that sitting at my picnic table where we have most of our summertime meals, if you're having a conversation you need to stop when a lorry is reversing into that loading bay. The delivery hours proposed by M&amp;S will constitute a severe loss of amenity to the residents of Waste Springs. These hours are antisocial. There's reference to an acoustic fence which is just going to be an ordinary fence, normal fence panels. They'll be totally ineffective in preventing noise from travelling up to the bedrooms where neighbours will be sleeping because of the angle and the height and just because it's a normal fence and none of these things have been discussed with us at all. Trees have already been removed along the back of the loading bay and it will be a significant amount of time before anything substantial grows to cover this area. There is a quiet delivery protocol and, you know, good on M&amp;S for writing it, should apply all the time, it's basic common sense and basic good manners. But there's no enforcement, you know, there's things like, "We'll try to mute the reversing alarm", you know? That's not enough for us because the consequences of antisocial delivery will have no repercussions at all on M&amp;S, they will be absolutely fine, it will be us the residents who will be disproportionately affected and this is just unfair and unneighbourly really. We have worked long and hard to find our house and to live there. We do our best to contribute to the community and make our neighbourhood a better place. These planning applications are causing a great deal of stress to ourselves and our neighbours, it's just not fair. We look to the planning committee to protect us so that the M&amp;S site is not a daily source of sleep disturbance at antisocial hours. M&amp;S work in logistics, they know what they're doing, they're receiving deliveries from their own factories, from their own plants, they have access to all the opportunities to make this right and make this possible so as not to have, not impact residents adversely. We ask that you restrict the use of the loading bay from 8am to 6pm.
Can I ask you to finish up please?
Okay, 8am to 6pm and 10 till 4 on Sundays. 10 hours is more than enough time to receive deliveries, do not let residents suffer as a consequence of our new neighbours' activities. We ask that you give our concerns the utmost consideration for making your decision tonight. Thank you very much.
I now introduce the supporter, Andrea McGregor Barber, speak. You have four minutes.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Can everyone hear me? No? Look closer. Is that better?
Yes.
Yes, okay, sorry. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Andrea McGregor Barber and I am the Marks and Spencer's Town Planner. We are pleased to open the new store at Hazelmeir and expect the store in this location will be successful and popular with local residents. To operate successfully and ensure we can maintain a fully stocked store, we need a delivery regime that gets fresh goods like meat... Sorry, I'll put it up, is that better? Yeah, it's just... To operate successfully, we ensure we can maintain a fully stocked store, we need a delivery regime that gets fresh goods like meat, fish, vegetables, fruit etcetera to the store on a very regular basis. This means both a morning delivery before the store opens and on busy days and early evening delivery. On this site, because delivery vehicles have to drive through the car park, we also need to minimise deliveries in busy trading periods. We operate a similar delivery schedule in our stores across the country including many sites within close proximity to residential properties. M&amp;S strive to be good neighbours and are used to operating quiet working procedures. We have agreed to comply with M&amp;S quiet delivery protocol at this store which we use at a number of our stores to assist in minimising noise from deliveries. With regards to your point, with regards thinking that the quiet delivery protocol is not conclusive, it's purely because a health and safety risk has to be taken and with regards the reversing papers, they are actually white noise so they are very minimal and there should be, as we've suggested in the quiet protocol, a bankman on site so that that alarm will not actually be necessary. But again, it comes down to health and safety practices at the store of which have to be assessed. While the current permission allows us to deliver at any time from midnight to 5:30pm, we have volunteered a restriction that would stop us delivering before 6:30 in the morning but seek your agreement to allow us to deliver until 8pm instead of the existing restriction of 5:30pm. This two and a half hour extension will enable us to operate the store efficiently and ensure the full range of goods that customers expect are always available. We are seeking works to trees on site to reasonably manage the risk from trees, prevent damage to existing structures and help maximise the value of the trees on the site. As officers indicate, planning permission has recently been granted for the majority of these treeworks. Replacement trees and hedging are proposed on the site which together with maintenance of existing trained trees will provide an effective landscape setting for the store with such measures being suggested by specialist consultants. On behalf of Marks and Spencer's, I hope you are able to agree with the officer's recommendation and support this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Members, over to you.
Thank you chairman. Going to the update sheet here, the first paragraph talks about the U hedge at 60 to 90 centimetres high in this location. That is just the first planting, it will grow higher I take it, they're not going to keep it at 90 centimetres because it's not going to do anything really is it?
Louise?
Yes, that's the size that it would be planted at and it will grow higher but what we usually ask developers when they're specifying what they are going to be planting on site is we require them to specify the size at planting so that we can ensure that that is reasonable for the area that's proposed.
Councillor Muller?
Few questions. U is a very slow growing hedge, is it not? Do they have any idea how quickly it will get to a useful height such as say five feet?
Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that question.
Secondly, when talking about the new trees, they refer to the girth, now do they mean the width or the circumference?
I think it's the circumference, I don't know, our tree and landscape officer has looked at this and does, does think it's acceptable but unfortunately I personally don't know.
How are tree officers here?
Can I just use the chairman's prerogative, I think there's someone in the audience who knows the answer, could you give us a clue? Thank you very much indeed.
Could I suggest in future we have this clearly spelt out in the report? I think on the tree, can we just be clear, how many trees are going to remain in total?
I think it's approximately 30, I don't know the exact number.
So the site isn't going to be completely denuded of tree cover?
No, there is quite a large proportion of trees that are being retained and where there are areas where the trees are being removed which would create sort of a large area of openness looking into the site, that is where the replacement planting is going.
If I could just add to that, arboricultural officers are fairly keen on retaining trees. That this scheme meets with their approval I think is some reassurance is what I'm...
I'm sorry, can I finish? I wasn't completely clear, what are the current restrictions on delivery at the site, both on Mondays to Saturdays and Sunday? I'm not sure I have completely grasped what the current position is.
Okay, the current delivery restrictions are they cannot deliver after 5:30pm or at all on Sundays. So effectively this means that from midnight they can deliver until 5:30pm in the afternoon on Mondays to Saturdays.
Thanks, that is helpful, right. So whatever else, it is clear that what is being proposed is a substantial delay in the time when these things can start from Monday to Saturday in return for an extra two and a half hours to 200 hours. Bringing in deliveries on Sunday which currently are banned completely. Well, I obviously appreciate that some companies or companies will differ in their approach. I think it is interesting that the co-op who were doing much the same job did not need to deliver on Sundays at all. And could I ask what discussions were held with the applicant to find out why that aspect of the extension was so important to them?
So they proposed to open on Sundays and they want to deliver fresh food in the morning before the opening hours on Sundays. before the opening hours on Sundays.
This betrays my ignorance of, I very rarely shop on Sundays. Anyway, was the co-op open on Sundays? So, sorry, I think I remain slightly puzzled as to why two bodies doing much the same job and selling food on Sundays, one needed to have deliveries and one doesn't.
If I could just interrupt, Tesco's are just over the road and they deliver seven days a week. councillor Inchbold.
Just a late arrest, the question of girth. Several dictionaries define it as the circumference.
councillor Heath.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got three points, but certainly two of them have already been covered to some degree. The point about the car park, first of all, I don't understand how the car park is impacted by deliveries. There's anything going to the rear of the store. There's a road that just takes the vehicles past the parking spaces. I've never seen a delivery lorry in that car park.
The entrance goes down the side of the, the south-east side of the, thank you, Louise, down the south-east side, and that's where the parking bay is for the trucks.
Well, we turn left to park, and I have occasionally seen trucks turning right to go around the back of the store to deliver it.
Louise.
The applicants have advised that because of the manoeuvring of the vehicles, it would be disruptive to vehicles parked in the store if the store was open. So for example, if a lorry came in and couldn't manoeuvre, it could be waiting on the road outside or cause vehicles to park elsewhere rather than in the car park, which they want to avoid.
I mean, I don't haunt the car parks, so I can't expect to be, I can't describe myself as an expert on parking patterns of, or patterns of parking, or patterns of delivery, rather. But, I mean, does that imply that they're going to use much bigger trucks? I don't know. Do we have any idea why this is such an issue?
Can I ask councillor Round? I think you want to come in on the same point.
Thank you very much. I just wish to contribute to Christians, to councillor Heath's comments. I have read or been told somewhere, unfortunately I can't remember where it is, that the New York, the M&amp;S proposed the trucks to drive forwards into the existing car park and then to back round to the loading bay. This would imply it's rather difficult if the store is open, full of shoppers' cars in the car park. It would have the benefit, I feel, of not reversing these trucks in from Lion Lane, where we all know from experience that at least the co-op truck drivers weren't very good at it and they kept churning up Lion Green and even knocking over the thick wooden bollards placed to stop them. So I think that would be an advantage. But it does remain of interest, are these trucks bigger than the, we shouldn't really keep on harking back to the co-op. If they're enormous trucks and they need to turn like that, then one has some sympathy
councillor Adams.
Sorry, that was just the first of three, if I'm allowed.
Okay, please.
Because if they're not going to be using massively bigger trucks and therefore changing the pattern of the way deliveries are made and how much that impacts on the customer parking, that has a bearing on the sort of hours that they would wish to deliver on. If they need to have the car park empty for some good reason, then I can see why they would want to deliver early. But if not, I think we could have some sympathy for the speaker who wanted the delivery hour to be, not to begin until later. And I am sympathetic certainly for the Sunday deliveries, for those not to happen until later, so they can at least have an undisturbed Sunday morning. I mean, I would need to be given some reassurance before signing off against a 6.30 delivery window on Sunday morning.
It's later on Sunday.
Sorry, 8, well, but the request was that it would get delayed until 10 o'clock. You know, is 10 o'clock unfeasible for any good reason? Considering that the co-op didn't have any deliveries at all?
Okay, fine, I hear what you're saying. Can we get on with the matter in hand? councillor Adams.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I was going to ask what the opening hours of this store are, in particular on Sunday.
They're not proposing to change the opening hours, so they would remain as unrestricted as the previous.
What are they? What are they?
I don't know.
Can I answer that, Mr Chairman, please? The cooperative store on a Sunday operated from 10 until 4, opening hours.
The same, for all supermarkets on a Sunday. And Monday to Fri, Monday to Saturday?
I believe it was 8 till 8.
No, it was, beg your pardon, Chairman, it was 7.
Thank you very much.
7 till 10.
Thank you very much, councillor Edwards. councillor King.
Sorry, that was the...
Oh, sorry.
Can I carry on? Okay. Having established what the opening hours are, then Marks and Spencer's are saying then they need an hour and a half in the morning before the store opens to restock. So if it opens at 8.30 or 8 o'clock, then that's an hour and a half. And the same on Sunday. I think if they're delivering fresh fruit and vegetables and things, I can understand that. I don't understand why they need to be still open though, all afternoon on Sunday, because they will have done their deliveries first thing in the morning. So I would have thought we could curtail the Sunday afternoon so that they're not disturbing the residents on Sunday afternoon.
Thank you. councillor King.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I wonder if it's worth pointing out, for the benefit of those of my colleagues who were not aware of the operation of the original supermarket there, they sold precious little fresh fruit and vegetables and fresh meat, very little. Marks and Spencer's operation, I know, is very different and their focus in fact is on fresh fruit, fresh fish, fresh meat etcetera. So that may help them to understand where that's coming from. But to add to that, the point I really wanted to make was that I actually think that I would be very unhappy, I must admit, if I lived in Way Springs and I was woken up at half past eight on a Sunday morning. I wouldn't be very happy. Oh, sorry, half, our Sundays, half past eight. I still think, I think it's too early for people with families to be disturbed and I'd like to see that at least moved to, say, at least 9.30 perhaps. Thank you.
Just to make the point that four miles up the road, you have an M&amp;S food store that has no restrictions on delivery whatsoever, surrounded by houses and nursing homes, and the nearest nursing home, the lodge, the Alzheimer's wing is at that end of the building. Fresh food, fresh vegetables, fish, meat etcetera is what they're talking about, delivering early in the morning, so you've got the whole day. If you go to Hindhead, you'll find that about 8 o'clock in the evening, the fresh food is sold off at very low prices. So it's fresh from the beginning of the day, right the way through. And that's a 24-hour petrol station, just a thought. Libby.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd just like to clarify, I've actually been at the Hindhead M&amp;S food store and I've, at the time of a delivery, and they are much smaller vehicles, delivery vehicles, than the large, standard delivery vehicle that you would expect for a supermarket.
Thank you very much. councillor Round.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make two points. One, which my colleagues have just mentioned, is that M&amp;S is not the same as the co-op at all. And the store at Hindhead, I suspect is in the garage, is rather smaller than that anticipated in Lion Green. But nevertheless, it is probably, I'm sure you could fill this in, open for much more extended hours, being attached to a garage. And I think we could assume that the opening hours for the Lion Green M&amp;S might be, if not now, they might apply for extensions in the future. The point is, we need to mitigate the disturbance from deliverers. And I have, I too have some sympathy with the residents of Way Springs. I too would not like to be woken up on a Sunday morning, or any morning, as early as that. I want to ask if the fence at the back of the delivery yard, which I presume is a common boundary with the lady who spoke, it says here it is, it acts as a noise barrier, yet I understand it was claimed that it's only a standard fence. Does it act as a noise barrier? If it's a standard fence, it won't. But it could be if you were heightened and appropriate materials used to construct it. And I wonder if a solution might be to impose a condition that they, not so much to curtail delivery hours, which I can see they need, but to improve the sound deadening material in that fence.
Thank you for that. councillor Edwards, you want to come back?
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to expound the view that councillor, that my colleague councillor Round has just expounded. But what I would like to say to Marks and Spencer is that they are going to cause problems for Way Springs, no matter what they do. And they should do everything within their power to address the concerns and the amenity of those residents. And if that means that we need to have one of these sound barrier fences that are currently on the A3, which are quite substantial and at a reasonable height, acceptable to the people that bound in Way Springs back on to the site, then that's what they should do. And those motorway fences last a long time. They're very substantial and they're very helpful. So if that could be done, that would be part of the solution to some of the, some of the loss of amenity for the residents. To go back to the situation of the lorries, the co-op, I know the operation very well because I used to operate a shop in Way Hill, the co-op had multiple deliveries on their vehicles. And they would deliver to Grayshot first thing in the morning and then go on to Lion Green and other stores. And there was more than one delivery vehicle. So they'd have a couple of deliveries sometimes a day. And obviously, and the papers would, sorry, the papers would come in on a different vehicle. The Marks and Spencer's are going to be far more busier than the co-op was. Make no mistake about it, they're going to take a lot of money and there's going to be a lot of noise and disruption for the neighbours. So we must do as much as we can to help the neighbours in Way Springs to address this problem. Thank you.
Louise.
If I could just quickly refer members to page 29 of the agenda report. The environmental health team has assessed the proposal and in particular looked at the fence to the rear. They did state that there is a protection, that the protection afforded by the noise barrier is limited by its height and therefore it's generally not practical relying on it as a noise barrier to protect the upper floors of a dwelling. I think for it to protect the upper floors, it would have to be quite significantly higher. That is why the proposed restrictions were limited to 8.30pm, which after that is when you would expect the upper floors to be, to be used.
Members, there are two points that we must address, but councillor Heath.
Just in case M&amp;S is feeling a bit in the cold here, I hope I can speak for us all when I say that we're delighted that M&amp;S is coming. We're sorry, just the co-op left in the circumstances they did, but we are pleased that M&amp;S is coming, that's point one. But I do have another observation. The few times that I have been down to either Tesco or co-op on a Sunday morning, early, the place is pretty empty. Now, M&amp;S may have a different model and may be planning to get more people in there early. But again, I just, I don't see why this is imperative to have this earlier delivery window on a Sunday morning. And I would support everything that my fellow councillors have said about stipulating a condition that parking or deliveries do not begin before half past nine, if that is acceptable to the, to my fellow councillors.
Just mention newspapers' delivery. You don't want those midway through the day. Before we move to the recommendations, anyone move an amendment on this item? councillor Mullner.
I think the only practical thing that we can do, apart from adjusting delivery hours, and I can understand the problems associated with that, is to beef up condition six, which is on page 36. And this is fortunately a prior to implementation condition. I think we should ask for officers to ensure that with the help of the environmental officer, a much more substantial noise barrier, albeit perhaps limited to the ground floor, should be imposed. From what I can tell, the existing fence is unlikely to be remotely sufficient. And I think if Marks and Spencer's were prepared to put something much more efficient, perhaps along the lines of the A3 barriers that were discussed, I think that would be a major contribution to good neighbourly relations. And it's the only, if you don't, it won't be concrete, but the only substantial improvement we can make, other than basically changing the hours, and I think for the morning, for the weekday deliveries, that's probably unreasonable. I have some sympathy with the idea of moving the Sunday start to 9.30, although your point about newspapers is just as valid then as on any other day. I think the one thing we could do to try and alleviate the Way Springs residents' concern is to make a more substantial barrier than that particular fence, which is currently fairly thin.
An acoustic fence is what you're suggesting, yes. Just remind you that the current regulations allow deliveries from 0001, midnight, and that is enforced at this time. And I think that's something we want to amend. councillor Round, can we?
councillor Mullner expressed what I suggested very well. I would like to add that as well as beefing up, that we should propose a motion to beef up condition six, but not just, the statement of the north-east boundary is a little vague. Sound goes round corners and I would like to see that fence be an appropriate sound barrier, basically at the rear of the store, not just the north-east boundary, but a little bit of the north-west and the south-east as well. Otherwise, everyone else in Way Springs will hear the noise.
Okay, fine. We have to speak to the amendment that's proposed by councillor Mullner and councillor Round. You're seconding that proposal? councillor Adams.
Sorry, I'm still concerned about, about the full time on Sunday because at the moment, although as you say, during the weekday, they can start after midnight, on Sunday at present, they can't deliver at all. I can see why they need to have an early morning delivery because if the store's going to open at 10 o'clock, then it does need time to refresh. But I still don't understand why they need such a late afternoon delivery facility. And I would like to propose that the deliveries cease at 1 o'clock on Sundays.
And the start time that you're talking about?
Well, the start time, I think, at 8.30. If they need an hour and a half to restock the shelves on Sunday morning, then I don't see they can do, do it much later than that.
Fine, thank you very much. We should be talking to the one amendment, first of all, on the acoustic fence. We have councillor Mullner, seconded by councillor Round's amendment to the fencing. Anyone else want to talk to that amendment? Are all those in favour of councillor Mullner's proposal? Louise has got it, I think.
Prior to the implementation of this consent, a plan shall be submitted to and approved by the local planning authority of a proposed... by the local planning authority of a proposed acoustic fence to the rear of the store to act as a noise barrier. This shall be maintained and retained in accordance with the approved plan. Sorry, this shall be installed, maintained and retained in accordance with the approved plan unless otherwise agreed in writing with the local planning authority.
Are you happy with that, councillor Mulliner? Round? Those in favour of that amendment?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Those against? Abstentions?
One.
Thank you very much. Now can we move to the hours, please? Councillor Adams?
Yep.
Do you have a second, sir?
Do I have a second, sir?
I'd have a second, but as long as we can agree.
In my view, 9.30 would curtail their deliveries too much. The store opens at 10.
I just wonder what volume of traffic people have observed in a supermarket car park the moment the doors open on a Sunday morning?
But this isn't a supermarket, that's the point.
Can we have one speaker at a time, please? Councillor Heskey, have you finished?
I think that 09.30 is, you know, I'm not an enterprise resource planning expert, but I think, there's nothing in here for me to understand why 8.30 is essential. We've conjectured why it might be desirable, but that's all we've got, conjecture. If 09.30, if they prove to be good neighbours and the sound barrier works, then can we review it? The timings can be reviewed in the future. But I do take the point about the residents' concerns about not having trucks pulling up from half past eight on a Sunday morning, which can be really important for working people to actually have one morning of the week where they can lie late.
Councillor Adams, you're the proposer, are you?
Well, I think 9.30 is too late for Marks and Spencer's. Perhaps 9 o'clock would be acceptable.
Councillor Edwards, do you want to come back?
I think this is.
Speak to this amendment on time.
From experience, this is an operational issue. The truck turns up at 8.30, I understand, I would understand. It backs into, it doesn't turn up till 8.30, it then backs into the delivery bay, it has to be unloaded, okay? It then has to close its doors and go off somewhere else, okay? But those pallets and those skips have to be unloaded onto the shop floor. And they need to be off the shop floor before they open at 10 o'clock. And consequently, for health and safety reasons, you can't leave it all lying around the floor, so they have a special shift that comes in to fill it up. It's an operational issue only, and that's what you need to bear in mind. They have to run a business, but whether in the hour and a half to do that, I don't know. But that's what I assume the upper state is for. It's not ideal for the residents, and if we can put it back a bit, it would help, but I don't know whether they can or not.
Right. We have a proposer who's suggested 9 o'clock as a start time. Do you have a second for that, councillor Adams?
And a termination time of 1 o'clock on Sundays.
13.00, okay. A second for that motion? Councillor Heskey? Anyone wish to speak to that amendment? In which case we'll move to the vote on the amendment to Sunday hours, 9 to 13.00 for deliveries. Those in favour, please show.
One, two, three, four.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six. So that's, that's not correct.
So that has failed, that motion. Anyone else wish to propose any other hours at this time?
Chairman, I think the problem with councillor Adams' proposal was we didn't like both ends of it, we should have done it separately. Can I come up with an alternative and suggest that we go from 9 until 4? That's a little bit more reasonable, I think.
Do you have a second, councillor? Councillor Piper? Anyone wish to speak to that amendment? 9 to 16.00 on a Sunday. Those in favour, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Those against?
One, two.
Abstention, one, thank you. Thank you, members. That amendment therefore is passed. Can we? Recommendation is set out on the update sheet, permission be granted, subject conditions 1, 2, 3, 4 and 5 on pages 34, 36 of the agenda, and amended conditions 2, 6 and 7 on the update sheet, and the amendments that we have just passed for the Sunday timing and the acoustic fence. Those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much, unanimous. Thank you very much indeed, members. Moving on to item B1, non-public speaking. WA 2015 and 1921, 76 Cherry Tree Avenue, Hayzamir, erection of retaining walls to facilitate off-street parking, new pedestrian access and associated works. Louise.
Thank you, chairman. The site is located on the western side of Cherry Tree Avenue, at the southern end of the cul-de-sac, and is currently occupied by a detached bungalow. Land levels rise steeply to the west and the bungalow is located at a significantly higher land level than the road. The surrounding area is residential in character. This first photo shows the application property on the right-hand side of the photo, with the adjacent property at 78 Cherry Tree Avenue on the left. The second photo shows the end of the cul-de-sac with number 78 Cherry Tree Avenue. As you can see to the left of the photo, this property has an existing off-street car parking space. The application site is located to the right of the photo. And the final photo at the bottom is taken from street level, looking up at the application property. The proposed car parking space would be located to the south of the site, adjacent to the boundary with 78 Cherry Tree Avenue. Ground levels would be excavated to create the car parking space, which would have a depth of 5.8 metres and a width of 2.75 metres. A new path would be installed leading up from the Cherry Tree Avenue and steps leading up from the edge of the car parking space. Enclosed bin storage would also be located adjacent to the proposed car parking space. The existing turning area on the road, which is here, would remain as existing. Retaining walls would be built due to the significant changes in land levels around the car parking space, path, steps and bin storage. This slide shows some computer-generated image of what the proposal could look like. As you can see, there'll be retaining walls around the car parking space, surrounding the bin storage and the altered path which leads up to the dwelling. This is another computer-generated image from the south-east of the site. This slide shows a previously refused application on the site, which included a garage in the place of the proposed car parking space, which is currently proposed. The matters of principle or technical opinion are the principle of development, highways issues and parking, biodiversity and the effect on the SPAs. The matters for members' judgement are the impact on visual amenity and the impact on neighbouring amenity. Can I draw members' attention to the update sheet, which showed the computer-generated images, which I've also shown on the slides? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Louise. Members, open it up to you. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to thank the applicant for his idea of what it would look like because looking at the previous drawing, it was almost impossible to visualise. I have one issue here, and what I am concerned about is the parking area is more or less level with the road access point, which I'm happy about because that'll mean that there will be less impact on the neighbouring amenity. And also, from the impressions we've got, there seems to be a retaining wall to the north side of the car parking area, where they've got some sort of hedge, I assume it's a conifer hedge or something. So am I right in thinking that? Because that will help shore up that little, that land neighbouring, where the neighbour's fence is. Am I right in thinking that?
Louise.
Thank you. Yeah, that's correct. There is a retaining wall here, and then there's the hedging, and then there'll be the neighbour's fence there.
Councillor Mulliner?
Thank you, chairman. I paid my own site visit today, I was able to speak to the objecting neighbour, Mr Green. I tried the other house, but no one was in. One point that has certainly occurred to me is that the current arrangements, do we have a photograph looking down the length of Cherry Tree Avenue? That's a pity. I asked about the current parking arrangements, it turns out the occupiers of the applicant basically park a car on the pavement, sorry, on the roadway just beyond the end of the turning circle. And I can understand why there's concern from the neighbour about the change in appearance. And one point which occurs to me is that there's no condition limiting the height of the vehicle that could be parked. It could be a small van if need be, and that would make a substantial difference to what is actually, even in the circumstance of Cherry Tree Avenue, quite a verdant appearance. The current outlook is basically a slope covered with various bits of greenery. The fact the applicant's chosen to put his retaining walls in rather dark brown rather emphasises that this is going to change the appearance in quite a significant way. And I must admit, I'm not as sympathetic as I thought I would be to this. I also gather, and perhaps the officer can help me, that when the previous application for the WA 2014 1204, which was for basically extending the house, I'm informed, and I'd like to know whether it's true or not, that an assurance was given that we had no change to the parking arrangements. And certainly, there's one line in the officer's report relating to that, which indicates that there will be no change to the parking arrangements as part of that application. So I think at the very minimum, I'd want to see some condition that that parking space would only be used for a private car, not more than whatever height most private cars are. I would not want to see it open to a very much high-sided vehicle, perhaps a caravan or a mobile home, which would make a big difference, or a van, just simply some sort of commercial vehicle. And I am a bit concerned about the colouring, if you like, the colour scheme of what is proposed. I'm sure things weather with time, but what is proposed is going to look a lot more, shall we say, industrial than the current arrangement. And I do think that whether we agree or not, the neighbour has a perfectly valid point, that what is proposed is quite significant. And I'm very concerned about the height of any vehicle parked.
Elizabeth Sims, I think you want to come in at this point.
Chairman, if I could just respond on that. I do entirely understand the sentiment and the point councillor Mulliner is making. I think from the viewpoint of imposing a condition, though, we have to ask ourselves whether any such condition would pass the tests of guidance. One of those tests, of course, is enforceability, another one is reasonableness. I think probably to restrict the height, it'd be very, very difficult to enforce. I think cars come and go by definition, they are transient beings. If it were to be breached, by the time we got there to take any action, no doubt the car would be gone. So by its very nature, that sort of thing is very difficult to control. I think probably the best way of capturing that would be to require that the use of the space would only be used for the private purposes of the single dwelling that it's related to. That's a status or a condition, only used for the private purposes of the dwelling house and not for any commercial use. And I think underlying that would be the assumption that for most purposes, private vehicles tend to be small-scale and not very high vehicles. But I think probably that's as rigid as you could make it. Thank you, chairman.
You want to come back, councillor Mulliner?
Yes, and I'm very grateful for that. Where officers do an extremely good job in preventing us going down a blind alley. I think, to be honest, and actually, I would say, subject to what I hear from others, it pushes me against this because the big change is there will now be a vehicle, you know, someone else's vehicle, right outside your path. And it's something which I can understand why the applicant wants it, that's very easy. But I do think it's making material change to what is there at the moment. They bought the house knowing exactly what the arrangements were. They now want to have a car for their own convenience parked rather than on the road a little further down. But unfortunately, they're doing it right by the neighbour's property. And yeah, I think I've been convinced, and actually, I can't really support this unless someone else convinces me that I should.
Thank you. Councillor King?
Thank you, chairman. Slightly following on from something that councillor Mulliner said, having visited the site, become very aware of the gradients on this site. It's a very steep site. And whilst I have every sympathy with the applicant who wants to find somewhere to park a vehicle off the road, and I don't blame him because it really is pretty bad up there, I do think that the brickwork that's being proposed and the amount of brickwork is going to be very intrusive in the street scene as it is now. It's a green, as we said, it is a green street. That is going to require a considerable amount of brickwork to retain the amount of earth that's going to be needing to be retained, particularly on the left-hand side, it's very, very close to the next-door neighbour's property. And if I live next door, I'd be very concerned about somebody excavating that close to my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Louise? Sorry, councillor Round?
Thank you, chairman. Continuing councillor King's observations, I tend to agree. The brickwork on, the most of the brickwork is to the middle and right of that illustration and really has very little to do with his car parking space. I can see you need substantial retaining walls where the proposed car parking space would be, but in the rest of the site, maybe it's not so necessary and perhaps it could be toned down or reduced in height. At the moment, one notices that the walls surrounding the public reversing space are only, if as much as a foot high. Regarding the application as a whole for the parking space, I tend to favour this. I think it's unfortunate that the gentleman, the people in this house, sorry, the applicant can't park outside or near. I don't think you would have trued very much on the neighbour because once excavated and a vehicle is there, it won't be as high as the fence that's already there at the moment. So I personally regard that as almost an improvement. So I would vote for this, but I would like to see the retaining walls to the right-hand side of the site reduced in appearance. Sires, thank you.
Louise?
Thank you. We obviously need to judge this application on its own merits on what is in front of us today.
Simon, councillor Inchfold?
Councillor. Simon will do. I would just to make the point that there is no restriction on the neighbour parking a van or any other vehicle in his drive, which would be equally intrusive on the street scene. So far as the brickwork is concerned, I think it's absolutely, well, it's obviously essential that there are retaining walls around the parking bay. Yes, I agree that the brickwork around the existing turning bay is not necessary, and it's a bit unfortunate that it's there. But on balance, I think that this applicant is perfectly entitled to want a parking bay there, and I will certainly be voting with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you very much. Just looking at the CGR, you could say the bricks are very brown, but the green is also a bit chlorophyll, you know. They are. brown, but the green is also a bit chlorophyll, you know. They are representative of greenery and brick. Councillor Edwards?
A quick one for you, chairman. With regard to the, it looks like square ivy or something on the walls there, they are perpendicular walls, those, aren't they? And we are relying, you know, on planting by the applicant to try and green those up. Am I right in thinking that?
Louise?
That's right. However, we do have a condition requiring full details of a landscaping scheme, so we could control what landscaping they do plant there in the first place.
Councillor Piper?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It's very apparent from the computer-generated images and the photographs at the beginning, that there's going to be significant landscaping and raising of various levels, which I think is the requirement of the retaining walls. If you look at the original photos, it really is just a bank of earth that just comes down. I think from the computer-generated images, they're going to be doing a lot of terracing, hence the additional brickwork.
Thank you very much. Councillor Adams?
Looking at these, I mean the CGIs, and looking at the picture on page forty-one, the development to the right of the stairs looks completely different. So which one are we actually, which one are we actually voting on?
Sorry, I was...
Well, on the CGIs, you've got very substantial brickwork and height on the installation to the right of the, in the turning bay. Whereas on the picture on page forty-one, you can see the brickwork going down quite more or less straight, and going down to the little path and gate which goes up to the path. So it looks, and in fact, even on the CGI, the picture on the right on page seven looks different from the pictures. So the question is, which design are we voting on?
Louise?
So the image on page forty-one is a two-dimensional image, whereas the image from the CGIs is a three-dimensional image. So they will appear different, but they are both the same.
Fine. But councillor Mulliner?
Thank you for letting me revert. I must admit, we deferred this for a CGI in a site visit, because we weren't quite sure what we were being asked to approve. I think a very good point was made by councillor Round, that the banking up of the turning head seems somewhat unnecessary. I mean, I can understand they've chosen one particular way to alter access to the main house. But I must admit, I do think it's all a bit ugly. And even if we turned this down, they can always come back again with a revised application. And certainly, I'm not at all clear that, I think councillor Adams is right, there's something slightly odd. There is a gentle bank at the moment on the turning head, this is now something much more significant. So without, you know, being unsympathetic to anyone, this doesn't pass my own smell test, to be honest. I think it's still not what we should be allowing. But I will obviously defer to the majority.
Thank you, members. Louise, do you want to come back with any further comment? No? Thank you, members. Let's move to the recommendation. Excuse me a moment. Councillor Mulliner, yes. Just coming back to your comment that the officer's made... Yeah.
Sorry, chairman. You said something about using the parking space for private purposes of the dwelling house and not for commercial use. Did you want to move that as an amendment?
Elizabeth, could you help us on this one? Councillor Edwards, can we...
Can I just clarify for my own, I think I've lost the plot here somewhere. Looking at that picture there, right, that's on the screen, is there another entrance gate to the right of that picture? There is, okay, thank you. So the banking there is to support the path?
Yes, indeed. Members, let's move on to the recommendation. It remains as in the agenda report, that permission be granted, subject conditions one to seven on pages fifty to fifty-two, informatives one to three on the agenda report. May have those in favour of the recommendation, please show.
One, two, three, four.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five. Abstentions.
Right, abstentions, one, thank you. Therefore, can we have an alternative recommendation, please? Councillor Mulliner?
That the application be refused because of its adverse impact on the street scene.
Do we have a second for that? Thank you. Officers? Elizabeth?
Chairman, we've listened to the debate, and we've picked up on some additional terminology which members have raised. We wondered if you'd like us to just a few words to enhance that reason for refusal. I think Louise has got some words. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. The proposal, by reason of the significant changes in land levels and excessive brickwork, would result in an intrusive, unacceptable appearance in the Cherry Tree Avenue street scene that would be out of character with the surrounding area. The proposal would conflict with policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, the Hazemere Design Statement and paragraph seventeen and sixty-four of the MPPF.
Councillor Mulliner, happy with that? Members, you have the recommendation to refuse. Can I have those in favour of refusing, please show?
One, two, three, four, five.
Those against?
One, two, three, four.
Thank you. The application is therefore refused. Thank you, members. That completes the meeting.